Call to order the regular city council meeting. The City of Uba City and successor agency, the redevelopment agency for the City of Uba City, regular meeting scheduled for 6:00 o'clock. If we could have roll call, please.
Buckland.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cleveland.
Here.
Councilmember Dibball.
Here.
Councilmember Dukes.
Here.
Councilmember Gill.
Here. Well, the invocation by Councilmember Dukes along with our pledge led by Councilmember Cashkill.
Please stand. Heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the wonderful community we live in. We thank you, Lord, for the opportunity we have here tonight to conduct our citizens' business. We pray that you would give us wisdom and guide us in what we do this evening. We ask this in your most holy name. Amen.
Salute pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our presentations and proclamations tonight, we have delayed item number one, which is the Seek Awareness and Appreciation Month, to our next meeting, which is November 1st. And we will take care of that at that time. Be moving on to public hearing. Item number two, Energy Service Contract with Optera Energy Services for energy-related improvements to city facilities. Diana Langley, our Public Works Director. Diana.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. The item before you tonight is an energy service contract with Optera for the installation of a photovoltaic system at the wastewater treatment facility and a battery storage at the water treatment plant. Ashu Jain with Optera is here tonight to provide a presentation on the performance of our previous project that they did, as well as details of the proposed project. If council approves the proceeding with the energy service contract, staff will bring forward a financing plan at a future meeting. So one of the questions that we asked was, what's the need to bring the energy service contract to council now without having the financing straightened out? The reason being that Optera needs time to prepare the application for the self-generation incentive program, which would provide potentially about $900,000 worth of incentives to the project. So they need to get started on that application as PG&E is expected to release that program soon, and it's a first-come, first-served. And so we wanted to bring the contract to council tonight so that they could get started on that, with the understanding that we would bring forward financing at a later date, and we would not be proceeding with the project without council's approval of the financing. With that, I'd like to introduce Ashu, and then I'd be happy to answer questions after the presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Langley. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff. Ashu Jain with Optera Energy Services. It's good to be back in front of your council. I'm going to take you through the presentation. Before I do that, I want to introduce Fede Gabriel, our project manager, and RJ Kroner, our project engineer. They were involved in the first phase, and they've been very involved in this phase of the work. Before I talk to you about what we are asking you to consider tonight, I want to summarize our results until now on what we are calling now the Phase One Project. So in the Phase One Project, we did a ground-mounted solar system at the water treatment plant, 510 kilowatt. We did solar shade structures at the Gap. I avoid saying the full form because I know I'll mess it up. And solar hot water heating system at the Gap. And also, we retrofitted all the lighting indoor and outdoor at all the buildings, at some of the parks. We renovated the HVAC system at City Hall and did some other energy conservation measures. So here's, you know, the solar projects were commissioned, started producing electricity in February of this year. And so, till date, sorry. Thank you. So if, as you see, at the water treatment plant, we are producing more than what we guaranteed, and similarly at the Gap, we're producing more than we guaranteed. Overall, year-to-date, till the end of September, we're producing 5% more than what we guaranteed. Lighting, we actually, we monitored them, and we are producing, we're saving 10%, 10.6% more overall for the entire project. Till date, we have 3.1% ahead. And we've only, you know, it's only been eight months, but for the first eight months, we are producing 3% more than what we had estimated in savings. So the proposal that we have in front of you for consideration tonight is a 2.1-megawatt solar project at the wastewater treatment facility and a battery storage project at the water treatment facility. So we are proposing a 2.1-megawatt system at the wastewater treatment facility, and this only came possible because in January of this year, CPUC allowed that more than 1 megawatt could be connected to 1 meter and still be net metered. And net metered is where you can sell electricity to PG&E at the cost that you're buying it at at any given moment in time, which is what makes solar projects attractive. So prior to January of this year, you could only do 1 megawatt. You already have approximately 800 kilowatt installed at the wastewater treatment facility, but now, because there's no cap, you know, we could install in this space that was identified by staff, we could install, we can install another 2.1-megawatt. It's fairly, a very attractive project. These are ground-mounted, you know, solar panels that are similar to what we did at the water treatment plant earlier. And this will avoid roughly 80%, 75, between 75 and 80% of the cost of electricity consumed by the wastewater treatment plant. What we are also proposing is a 750-kilowatt battery storage system. Battery storage is, you know, it's the same technology, lithium-ion batteries that you see in electric cars, except these are installed in buildings. We actually own the company who's going to be doing this project. It's the largest commercial energy storage company in the country. And what you do, just briefly, you charge the batteries when the cost of electricity is low, and you discharge it when its cost of electricity is high. So there's a lot of demand savings. PG&E charges you around $14 an hour for every hour, based on your maximum demand in the month. So when we lower that demand, you're saving $14 an hour. So that adds up to quite a chunk of change. And also, you know, so there's demand savings, and then there's energy savings, because you're basically selling high and buying low. So here's the financial performer, and we have a few options in front of you, and I'll take you through them. I have to say that, you know, we're not a municipal advisor. We are legally prohibited from giving the council advice on financing. These have been worked out in coordination with your financial advisor. So this is using clean renewable energy bonds and what Ms. Langley mentioned, the self-generation incentive program, and that will probably open in November. We want to do our engineering. We have committed that we will, it needs a $45,000 deposit. We have committed that we will submit that check of $45,000 at our risk. For some reason, if the financing doesn't happen, if the project fail, I mean, fails to get approval, that'll be our problem. So we will do the engineering and submit the check at our risk. So $8.7 million project. There's some financing costs for your financial advisor and bond counsel. There's some other construction period interest. So you'll be financing $9 million over 17 years. This is the interest rate that your financial advisor came up with. We have the same assumptions that we had in Phase One, 4.5% increase in electricity cost, 0.5% degradation of solar panels, 3% increase in our maintenance cost. First-year savings, $623,000. You know, incentive is really going to be around $900,000. We've been a little conservative here. So that's the total savings. Lease payments of $635,000 based on the 2% 17-year. We will guarantee the savings for the finance term of 17 years. That's the measurement and verification cost, exactly same as, same concept as Phase One. We will completely turnkey provide all the maintenance required for the energy storage system, as well as the solar system. So net savings, $313,000 in the first year, and overall savings under this option is $19 million. We wanted to take a look at what's the worst-case scenario if there are no incentives available, which is, you know, it's highly unlikely because it's a tiered program. It'll last, at least, they'll release it in phases. It'll last a couple of years, or at least. So we don't expect that this will ever happen, that you have no incentive. Even in that case, you'll still save $18 million. Finally, you know, if you, I failed to mention, clean renewable energy bonds are basically bonds by the US Treasury, and the finance company gets a tax credit, 70% tax credit from the Treasury. So basically, that reduces the interest rate. Staff applied for the clean renewable energy bonds to IRS, I want to say, six weeks ago. There were some clarifying questions that IRS had, and staff responded to that, and we expect final approval of the CRIBs this week or next week. So, but if CRIBs are not approved, you can always do traditional financing. You know, it'll be around 2.6% interest, and the savings will be around $18 million again. So, so between the three options, you have around $18 to $19 million in savings. You're saving around 80% of the wastewater treatment plant, approximately 20% of the water treatment plant. We have bought 20-year warranty on the inverters, 25-year, the solar panels come standard with 25-years warranty, and we have bought 20-year warranty on the battery storage system. So turnkey warranty, anything goes wrong with the battery storage system for the next 20 years, it'll be on us. So that's essentially the proposal. I think the rest is, so if your council decides to approve the project, we'll wait for the financing, and then we hope, we'll start on the engineering as soon as possible. And because of the solar project, we have to work with PG&E. Actual, this is not actual construction happening all the time, but PG&E takes a lot of time in approving these applications. So we expect to be, definitely be done by March of 2018. The battery storage project will be done much earlier than that. I think that's all I have. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council of Sue or Diana before we open this to the public?
To the mayor.
Okay. I do have one question. You mentioned there was a 5% degradation of the solar panels.
Half a percent.
Or, excuse me, half percent. The solar panels in this area tend to get dirty over time. Is there any maintenance to keep those panels clean so that they're operating efficiently during the year?
Yes, sir. So we monitor approximately 350 projects from our office, and we will monitor them 24/7, including your project at the water treatment plant. So when we see that the production is going down, we will come and clean it. Cleaning is part of our responsibility. We have a guarantee, guaranteeing 95% of the energy produced by the solar system. It's in our best interest to keep the solar panels clean. So we are monitoring them. There's alarms that are programmed into the monitoring system. So if it goes below a certain percentage, we will come and clean the solar panels. Otherwise, we definitely clean them once or, I think, once a year.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, to the mayor. You mentioned that it's the 2089 kilowatt system is 80%. Is there a restriction or a reason why we did not go to the 20750? Is there something within the?
It was space.
Just space?
Yeah.
Okay. So it looked to me like some shorter panels could go in there, but?
So we are actually using the biggest solar panels, 370 watts, which are, you know, that's the biggest panel available today. So just to maximize the amount of panels we can cram into that space, we are using the largest panel, and that's the maximum we could squeeze in.
So that, I'm trying to find the picture of it.
I can bring it up.
So that space that was there, right there, that's the maximum you could get inside of that area?
Yeah, so.
Or is it a good representation, or is it just?
No, it's pretty accurate. These are made on CAD. So I think there's, we looked at every, other locations, and, you know, staff has plans for expansion or whatever else for other spaces. Yeah.
That answers the question. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I'm going to open this to the public. Any member of the public wishes to speak to this item, maybe do so by going up to the podium, letting us know who you are. So I'll open it to the public.
Yeah, Chuck Miller here, North Uba City. The question I have concerns the kilowatt-hour cost. You are installing a rather large plant, it seems, and you mentioned that the solar panels are good for like 25 years, at least that's the guarantee I heard. What is the cost of a kilowatt-hour that is produced by this plant?
That's a, that's a good question. You know, because the city owns the system, will own the system, we didn't really, it's not a power purchase agreement, so we didn't really have a cost per kilowatt-hour calculated. But, you know, it's a net savings over, you know, over the, so the savings are in excess of the lease payment. So it's, I can tell you that the cost is much lower than what you're paying. You're paying around 15 and 1/2 cents per kilowatt-hour right now to PG&E. I'll have to do some calculations to figure out what the cost is, but it, I mean, let's say it's around, I don't know, 10, 11 cents.
10 or 11?
It's a total guess. I didn't calculate it. So, because it's not done as a power purchase agreement, so we didn't really get into that calculation.
But you do have calculations for savings to the city.
Right. So.
So there must be some.
Oh, yeah. No, we can definitely come up with what's called.
There must be some knowledge of the cost.
Right. We can, we can definitely come up with what's the levelized cost of energy, which is a standard term in the industry. And if you're very interested, I would be happy to do it. It'll take me no more than 10 minutes.
I am interested.
Okay.
It's not something I have to need to know instantly. You could give the information to Diana if it would be more convenient for you.
Absolutely. I would definitely do that.
That's very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other member of the public? So Chuck, we'll get the answer to you, specific to which, what the cost is per kilowatt-hour. The spreadsheet that was shown shows some assumptions in it. We have to look at those as realistic, given the track record that we currently have with PG&E and the, and the system performance. So what we look at is not necessarily what each kilowatt-hour is costing, but what the overall savings to the entire system would be.
Thank you.
All right. No other member of the public wishes to speak? I'll close the public session, or the public hearing on this, and bring it back to council for action.
To the mayor, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve staff's recommendation for A and B.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Thank you very much. That item will move to the next phase. We have bid openings. Item number three, Franklin Road Improvement Project Award. Total cost of $503,570. Ben Moody, Deputy Public Works Director. Ben.
Good evening, Mayor Buckland, members of the council. The item I have before you is in regard to the bid award for the Franklin Road Improvements Project. This project is, was, is part of a grant through SECOATP, the Active Transportation Program, where we received $368,000 to improve the pedestrian crossing, primarily in front of Mahal Plaza, and then to fill in some pedestrian sidewalk gaps, just to the, just to the west of Mahal Plaza, and then on the north side of Franklin Road, just west of Walton, there's a couple, a couple gaps in there. So the project was put out to bid in September, opened October 6th with five bids received, with North Star Construction of Uba City being the low bid. The bid came in almost right on the engineer's estimate, at $419,000. And so, so with that, we want to move forward with the award and transfer available funds into the project to cover construction, contingency, project management, and to facilitate the project. So with that, I recommend we award the contract to the low responsible bidder, North Star Construction, authorize the city manager to execute the contract on behalf of the city, and authorize the budget transfer from the capital improvement project from the traffic signal account. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions of Ben at this time?
No, just a comment. Pretty close with the engineer's estimate, huh?
Yeah. We're trying to get better. We're, so it's definitely coming up a little bit more, but North Star Construction, they're really a reputable contractor where we've used in the past. They've been really good, but on a lot of our past bids, they're usually the fifth or sixth bidder. And so I think a lot of our bidders that work supply and demand, so a lot of people are busier right now, which is resulting in some increased costs.
To the mayor. Go ahead. Recommend the item, items A, B, and C for approval.
Second to that motion.
We have a motion and multiple seconds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And once again, Ben, it's awful nice to have a, our local contractors get an award, so.
Agreed. Thank you.
Moving on to item number four, custodial services contract, FB 16-10. Mr. Spencer Morrison, our accounting manager.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Item four is the, is it about the, as you said, the custodial services award. In June of 2016, we awarded to low bidder, Tony Frogga Building Services, $56,676 annually to provide custodial services to the senior center, Goshay Aquatic Park, and the animal shelter. In July, staff began working with Frogga on some deficiencies in the service. By the end of August, it became apparent to staff that a change was warranted. Ultimate building maintenance is the next low bidder at $77,100 annually. Ultimate building maintenance had been providing the service satisfactorily prior to the RFQ. And staff recommends council award a contract to ultimate building maintenance of Uba City in the amount of $77,100 for one year, with the option of three one-year extensions, as approved by the city manager. Are there any questions?
Any questions of Spencer? Comments? The only comment I have is, sometimes it's not best to go with the lowest bid. That performance means everything, especially when it comes to building, maintenance cleanliness, and areas that the public would perceive weren't being taken care of to a satisfactory level. So thank you for taking the action to bring this forward. Action from council?
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Thank you very much. Don't go anyplace, because we're moving on to item number five. Purchase of one Ford F-350 with a custom truck body. This is RFQ 17-01. Spencer Morrison.
Good evening. Again, the vehicle 04-31 is a water distribution division, F-350, with a custom truck body. It was in an accident. Staff is working to recover $7,864 from the other driver's insurance. Staff recommends replacing the F-350 over repair due to the vehicle being near the end of its service life. And at $8,000, the custom, the replacement custom bed costs nearly twice the market value of the 2004 vehicle. The vehicle replacement plan balance plus the insurance reimbursement will cover the cost of the new vehicle. Quotes were received by Givekey Ford of Uba City at $37,048.15. Ron Duprat Ford of Dixon, California, $37,062.96. Downtown Ford of Sacramento, California, $39,584.8. And staff recommends that council award the purchase of one Ford F-350 with custom truck body to Givekey Ford in the amount of $37,048.15 by finding it is in the best interest of the city. The recommendation will authorize a supplemental appropriation of that purchase amount to the vehicle replacement fund for the purchase. Are there any questions?
Any questions of Spencer?
Nope.
Action from the council.
I'll make a motion to approve staff's recommendation for A and B.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Thank you very much. Three, three local businesses have gotten awards tonight, so.
Excellent.
Looking good. Public communication, you're welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on items listed on the agenda when they're called. Public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be heard under item number seven, which is the appearance of interested citizens. Comments on controversial items may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. Do we have any written requests tonight?
We received one for item 12, so you can hear it at that time.
We'll hold and hear it at that time. Item number seven, appearance of interested citizens. Members of the public may address the city council on any items of interest that are within the city's jurisdiction. Individuals addressing general comments are encouraged to limit their statements to three minutes. Any member from the public wish to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the city council, staff, or public request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. Any items for the city council to be removed, from staff, from the public?
Move for approval of consent calendar.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to general items. Item number 11. Memorandum of Understanding with Mehmet Noyan Company for the property located at Bridge and Shaster Streets. This is commonly referred to as the Feather River Mills site. Presentation will be by Darren Gill, Economic Development and Public Affairs.
Good evening, Mayor Buckland and city council members. This evening, I have the pleasure to come and talk with you about the Feather River Mills site. The Feather River Mills site is a former redevelopment agency property. This is a map that includes all of the former redevelopment agency properties, and the one parcel we are talking about is the one in red. The red portions are actually six and a half acres, and if you include this, this should include one more corner piece right there, which makes the total site a seven and a half-acre parcel. So a little bit about the history of the Feather River Mills project. There's a lot up on the screen. I won't go through all of it, but in short, the city entered into an exclusive negotiating agreement. agreement with Mehmet Noyan Company in December of two thousand and twelve. That was a competitive process where multiple developers came in and asked for the rights to be able to negotiate exclusively with the city. Soon thereafter, in June of two thousand and eleven, the states changed state laws and actually eliminated redevelopment. And since that time, laws have continuously changed. The Oversight Board would make a, both the council or the Oversight Board would make an approval, and soon thereafter, the state would change the law. And since that time, staff has continuously worked to see this project move forward. And finally, in actually June of this year, the city received, well, first of all, we received approval from the state to be able to actually sell the property. And then second, the city received approval from the Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board, which is that long acronym on bottom, that approved our RAP or our remediation action plan, which allows for the cleanup of the property since it does have some contamination at the soil and surface levels and not in the water table, which would allow the site to be developed. And that brings us to the point here this evening. A little bit about the Mehmet Noyan Company. One, he was chosen and his company was chosen through a competitive process. He is a Fresno-based developer, but a homegrown, born and raised, a honker. His father was a local vet here. He has significant experience developing challenged properties that have contamination, a large project, which I believe was a former landfill. I was trying to find the good way of saying it. A landfill in Fresno. And if anyone's ever been to it, it is stunning, and you would never know that it was a landfill. It's a beautiful site, and his project is, where his office is, is surrounded by some of the top-end retail car sales right around his project. He has continued to put together a quality development team throughout the past six years with no guarantee to move forward, not knowing what would happen with the state and redevelopment. And really, I want to express my gratitude as a staff that Mehmet Noyan has worked collaboratively with us for the past six years, expending his own funds to actually market the property and to review a variety of the different environmental documents that have been created and has partnered in actually paying for many of the documents that have been drafted by the city if we're not able to get reimbursements through the state from the former redevelopment agencies. So it's really demonstrates that we truly have a partner that has stuck with the city in seeing this really one of our top development sites in our city move forward. During that time, the project has kind of changed and adapted. And throughout that process, he has worked with staff, with our current planning director to try to look at the layout of the project, which staff is supportive, which you will see a layout tonight. And he'll talk a little bit about the differences between the two, because he was chosen based upon a competitive process with some conceptual ideas that has changed. And Mr. Noyan will speak about that this evening. Finally, what's before you this evening? It's a memorandum of understanding, which provides basically an exclusive negotiating agreement for the city to continue working with Mehmet, with Mr. Noyan, for one hundred and eighty days. During that time, we will work to enter into a development and disposition agreement with the Noyan Company. As part of that, he will have to provide a financing plan and partnership structure so that the city is comfortable with what he's proposing. Design and layout of the project to his best of his knowledge. Obviously, he still needs to work to actually have a few tenants sign for the property. Are very excited about some of the opportunities that he's talked to us about. And really, through the last five years, he's brought a number of key tenants for this property to the city that we've met with, and I know he's very close to hopefully having some of them signed. It will require the city to move forward with the completion of all entitlements and environmental review. Also reimburses the city for environmental testing costs that if we don't get paid back by the redevelopment agency. And then finally, it does include a one hundred and eighty-day extension if we're not able to complete this process within the first one hundred and eighty days. And that would be approved by the city council, by the city manager through that process. At this time, I can answer any questions that you might have about the MOU and the process to this point. And then I'd like to introduce Mr. Noyan to come up and speak a little bit about his project.
Any questions of Darren? Nope. Mehmet, you're on. And when Darren said that his father was a vet, he was a veterinarian in our area for forty-five?
Forty-five years.
Forty-five years. And I will tell you that he always kept my hunting dogs pretty healthy.
That was his passion, his love.
That's right.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Mehmet Noyan. I want to thank staff, Darren, for all the work they've done. He's kind of hit all the high notes, a lot of things that I was going to say tonight, so it'll probably limit the amount of my presentation. This whole journey started back in two thousand and nine with the original RFQ, which I have a copy of here, and I really can't believe it has been that long. We've been through a great deal during that period of time, an economic recession, a change in government policy. As Darren has told you, I did start the original project, contemplated assisted living and skilled nursing. Since about two thousand and eight and nine, the way that those facilities have looked at California in general has changed. And so in two thousand and ten, we commissioned a market study with a feasibility firm out of Southern California to analyze the prospect of doing hospitality, hotel on the site, in place of the assisted living. The study was very extensive. The study was very positive, and it came back in support of hospitality. I probably have had half a dozen groups with Darren and other members of the staff coming through the community, looking at the market, either not ready or not equipped to do it. We are now talking to a group with a national chain who wish to remain anonymous. We've made some progress with them, and I hope to be able to strike a deal with them very shortly so we can move forward with the first leg of this project, which would include the hospitality group, approximately one hundred rooms. Darren can show, I don't know if you can put up the original plan? You can see the original plan contemplated, retail on the corner. That hasn't changed. Oh, thank you very much. This is essentially the same thing as what I'm proposing for future phases. This is with the assisted living and skilled nursing. Now, we're taking this back portion of the property, we're devoting that to the hospitality group, approximately two acres. Also, this did not, at the time, have the one acre that the city picked up at a later date, and this will be added, and this will be hopefully a complimentary use to the hospitality group, and hopefully at the same time. But again, putting the two site plans side by side, from this point north, nothing has changed. This is still, as was contemplated, this is the biggest and then the most significant change. And I think it's an improvement, frankly, over the original concept of doing assisted living and skilled nursing. Hospitality will bring activity, it'll bring tourism, it'll bring dollars to Plymouth Street and to this end. And with the bridge and everything else happening, it's kind of the perfect storm and I think the perfect opportunity. So I'm, I think Darren mentioned, I am a Uba City native. I did another project here twenty-five years ago at Walton and Highway Twenty. I don't want that to be the legacy that I leave to my hometown, so I'm very, very proud of Feather River Mills, and I hope you'll allow me to continue to move forward. Thank you very much.
Any questions of Mehmet or Darren?
Can I mention one thing too? I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I forgot to mention that two gentlemen, friends of mine from Fresno, came up. Jeff Croker and Jim Christian, both were involved with me in the business park that I developed in Fresno. We had, you name it, we had it. We had landfill, we had groundwater contamination, we had just about everything you can envision on a two hundred and thirty-five acre site. But we ended up, Jeff did most of the demolition, Dave did four and a half miles of public streets in the middle of the project. And today, it is a half a billion dollar business park that's probably the most successful business park in central California. And I couldn't have done it without these guys, and they've committed to help me on this project. So yes, they're not from Uba City, but they have extensive experience in working with these kinds of projects.
Well, gentlemen, we'll let you move up here if you'd like to. We would welcome you.
We have water.
Through the mayor?
Go ahead.
I don't have any questions, but just some comments. Mehmet, believe it or not, when I first joined Rotary Club, your dad was in Rotary with me for a number of years, known your family for quite some time, and I think you and I have talked about this being a, probably one of the model projects for a city of Uba City. I remember prior to getting on council, that spot was supposed to be the place for the theater.
Right.
And that kind of got axed as soon as we got onto the council because didn't feel we needed a theater, and we didn't think that was the right spot for it. But having said that, and having visited with yourself and taken a look at this, I think this is going to be an ideal mix for something that this community's needed for quite some time. And I know, you know, the hotel piece, especially how short we are, for those of us that have businesses that travel up and down, it's amazing that our Uba City Hampton Inn is always booked, and it's probably one of the highest rated hotels, and dollar-wise, one hundred and eighty bucks a night, and how it's booked and how we need more of them in this community. So having that along with a possible convention center or a ballroom, grand room in this community is going to be a great asset. So hats off to you for continuing to stick with it.
Thank you.
Even though I know there's been a lot of hurdles and challenges for yourself, and can't wait to see this project finally completed, especially with the new bridge coming down into Uba City.
Through the mayor? Go ahead. I'd also like to express my thanks, Mehmet, to your company, and we've been through a lot since two thousand and nine to get to where we are today. A lot of it, not things that you or we envisioned would happen along the way, but thank you for sticking with it and bringing forward a project that will be a showpiece for our community. And I talk many times about public-private partnerships and how we need to be good partners, just as you are a good partner with the city, we need to be a good partner, and this extension is certainly warranted, given the fact that all that you had to go through in waiting on the state to get us to where we are today. So thank you for your tenacity and your persistence on this project.
Through the mayor?
I was actually part of that competition that you had to go against, the original.
Oh.
Housing Authority. You know that, that was a...
Mercy Housing.
Yep, Mercy. We were part of their partner in doing the Mercy Housing. So I intimately knew the designs and everything like that, and that's while I was a supervisor. And I'm actually quite pleased that it did not go that way, and the design that is coming out now, based upon the changes of transportation and the makeup of downtown, and the hospitals that are there, and all the businesses, this will be a better fit, the design that we have now. So I'm very pleased that sometimes the delays actually end up being a good thing. And unfortunately, but fortunately, the delays kind of held you up, but you never gave up. You kept saying, that's a good spot, it needs to be done right. And so thank you for sticking with it, and due to the state being a bad partner many times, you get your extension, get this done in a way that's best for our community.
I don't have much to say other than I'm glad that you stuck with the project. I met with you a couple of times, and going through the history of how long it took, very, very appreciative that you stuck it out and really planned something that is conducive to what we need with the extension of Bridge and the new hospital. There's going to be the need for the hotel, you know, just looking at the over, the big site for the city as far as patients and their families to be taken care of, aside from our own community use. We'll have a lot of the patients here as well, and they'll need a place to stay, the comfort while they're going through a difficult time. So that whole area to be revamped in the design that you have is going to be very conducive to helping those families from the outside as well as our local families. So thank you for sticking with the project.
Through the mayor? With all these wonderful comments, I'd like to recommend...
I'm actually going to open it to the public.
Well, then I'm going to hold.
Yeah. I'm going to let the public make any comments, and I certainly want to also make a couple statements, and that is that the city is engaged in making a new entry into the downtown. It's a four-phase project. Phase one has just been completed. Everyone is welcome to come to an event down on Reeves Avenue at Plymouth Street on Friday at four o'clock as we talk about what the next steps are. And those next steps are the total investment that this community will make on the Bridge Street corridor with the cooperation of Uba County, Marysville, and Sutter County will be a total of about a hundred million dollars in opening up that transportation route into Uba City and into the heart of Uba City, and also making Marysville far more accessible, but also making Uba City more accessible from Beale Air Force Base and other regions outside our immediate sphere. So one of these gateway projects, as you have vision for that location, is going to be very welcome, and that will be a welcoming site in opposition to what has been there in the past, and what we can do as a community to move this community to the next level, and certainly see you as one of those partners that will help get us to that point. So with that, I'm going to open this to the public for any public comment. This is a large development. It's a big piece in town. We have used that property twice now to stack debris on from construction. So you have seen it in use, and people have often wondered, what are they digging up? Well, we weren't, we were just stacking stuff on it so we could haul it off at a different time. But any member of the public that wishes to speak to this project? Seeing nobody stepping forward, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we'll bring it back to council.
All right. I'll reopen my motion to include items A and B.
I'll second that.
I'll let Preet have it, it's fine.
Doesn't matter.
We have a motion, and we have a, let's let Preet have the second.
Flip a coin.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Thank you very much, and thank you once again, Mehmet, and partners, for everything that you're doing here. Moving on to item number twelve, business from the city council. This item I'll be bringing forward. Our city manager is the key person for the city. Our form of government allows the city manager to have a control of all departments and is instrumental in how we move Uba City forward on a daily basis, how we serve the public. He is the man that either gets the credit for it or is admonished by the public for actions that are taken that might be perceived to be, you know, counter to individuals' desires. We, as a council, met in closed session to look and evaluate the performance of our city manager, and overwhelmingly, this council is pleased with the performance of our city manager. And in that evaluation, we also looked at a couple of things that we could do to better his contract here with the city. The one item that we undertook was to extend administrative leave time for him by an additional forty hours to a total of one hundred and twenty hours, which is authorized within our personnel manual for the city of Uba City. So that was an item that this council undertook and reviewed and agreed to, and then additionally, adding an additional year onto his contract for a new expiration date of his contract for December thirty-first of two thousand and nineteen. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution authorizing me to sign the city manager employment agreement between the city of Uba City and Mr. Stephen Kragger, starting on this date through December thirty-first of two thousand and nineteen. Any comments from the council? Through the mayor? Go ahead. Section number three, the forty-hour additional administrative leave. I would like to see that this is reviewed on an annual basis to... I would like to see that this is reviewed on an annual basis to give the city manager the flexibility to determine whether or not he wishes to continue that or if he wishes to take this in a monetary contribution to his salary. The reasons for giving it may change and I just think that the council should have the ability to look at that on an annual basis to determine whether or not that makes sense to continue it.
Any other comments from council?
No, I would agree with council member Duke's comment. I think the other thing to point out, and we are talking at the 120 hours for sick-time leave, but that's the only thing, there is no salary increase, merit increase, so that salary remains exactly where it was.
So you would like to, to make it very clear, you'd like to amend the agreement that this would...
Just, just, excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Dukes, I think we've already got that covered in section five. If I take a look at section five, the third paragraph, we talked about the 40 extra hours of administrative leave and we have language stating that the amount of administrative leave shall be reviewed annually?
Thank you. I just didn't see it on this, this version we had here in front of us, so thank you.
It's not on this version.
Oh, on the resolution itself.
Yes, it's not in the resolution itself.
But it's in the...
But it's, but it's in the agreement.
It's in the contract.
Right, thank you. That's, I wanted to make sure it was a part of the agreement.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments from the council before we have two speakers wish to speak to this? Mr. Renton?
I have copies for each of the council members.
Good evening, Bob Renton. 1106 Hun Road. Reference the agenda item 12, the city manager contract. The city manager contract should actually be reduced and not increased. A severance package of six months pay is unconscionable. Residents served by city water are still very bitter about the water rate increase and that hike is partly due to excessive city compensation within the pay structure, including the manager. The city manager failures do not justify an increase in any area of benefits or base pay. He told you in February of this year that he would seek a resolution of support for annexation from the board of supervisors. He failed to seek that resolution, even though he also stated to you at that same time in February that he recognized police service to the annexation, excuse me, to the Walton area was a council priority. The city manager also told you in February of this year that his conversations with city staff indicated that this annexation in the South Keyhole area was of great importance to the county. So far, he has failed to identify who still supported that claim at the time it was made. He implied his February conversation with the current county CAO supported his claim. That's not true. I talked to Mr. Coed directly myself. The city manager was misleading to the council. He also properly, excuse me, he also failed to properly supervise the public affairs official, Mr. Darren Gale. Mr. Gale made misstatements to LAFCO that resulted in a significant loss of city advantage. Our opposition gained a 45-day protest period, which is only fair, but that was a gain from a normally allowed 21-day period that is normally allowed by LAFCO. However, those of us in the annexation area are delighted to have 45 days. Now, in order to save city council some time from hearing my comments and letters, I offered Mr. Gale an opportunity to avoid my comments. I asked that Mr. Gale provide the mailing to annexation area residents... Excuse me? To annexation area residents. He had told LAFCO on September 22nd that the mailing was ready to send and would be done as soon as LAFCO approves the application. Mr. Gale later informed me that the mailing was still in draft form, that it, and that was almost a month ago. So far, that mailing has not been received. Now, the city manager and police chief reported to you that the startup cost for BEAT 6, the future BEAT 6, was $1.2 million, not chump change, and an extra cost of $300,000 annually. This would be the cost of providing officers to the future BEAT 6. Now, our opposition to annexation has provoked process letters from 200 people and most of those have stated they are happy with the sheriff's service. Now, Uba City seems to have difficulty hiring the eight open police officer positions they currently have in spite of an attractive pay level. How are you going to plan to fill an additional five BEAT officers in five months for a future BEAT 6? Now, Uba City taxpayers should be upset with the prospect of subsidizing a future BEAT 6 at $300,000 per year. I say cut the city manager pay and do not increase his compensation package.
No, Mr. Renton, you don't get to leave. I think we have a couple of questions. I have a question for you. Mr. Renton, I have a couple of questions for you. You say things publicly. Now, I'm going to hold you to answering a couple of those.
No problem.
How, how do you, in the BEAT 6 area, do you know the structure of the BEAT 6 area?
Absolutely.
Okay. Could you describe those, the outline of that?
The Walton area, current Walton area that's been annexed and the current proposed annexation area, the so-called Keyhole area.
Okay. So the Uba City taxpayers should be upset with the prospect of subsidizing a future BEAT 6...
Right.
At $300,000 per year. Where do you come up with that figure?
The $300,000 per year number came directly from the city manager in February.
Is that, or is that area, is BEAT 6, is that or is that not a portion of that currently lies within the city?
The Walton area is currently part of the city.
And the city pays whom to provide law enforcement protection to that area?
The Sutter County Sheriff.
And, and you know what the city of Uba City pays to the sheriff's department for that protection, for that area?
I have no idea.
Okay. When you put facts out, Mr. Renton, please have them all. And we have one additional question that has come up on this council.
Yeah, through the mayor, I've got a question for yourself, Bob. I'm just curious, where do you live at? I have a property interest on Hun Road, at 1106 Hun Road. It's where I was raised from, seven years old. But where do you live at? And I currently live, my full-time place is in Live Oak. I have a ranch in Live Oak. Okay, thank you. Because I was curious, because your sign has 695 number. Yes. Your mailer has a 695 number on it, so I didn't know if you had any interest in Uba City whatsoever or you were just living in Live Oak. Absolutely. I spend at least one day a week in Uba City. Okay. Thank you. At that property.
All right. Any other questions, Mr. Renton? All right, thank you, Bob. Next up would be Rick Dice, would like to speak on this item.
Honorable city council, it's become quite apparent that Uba City government's be, seems to be in almost total disarray. I've got two exhibits. Exhibit number one, the annexation that Bob referred to, the so-called Keyhole. Had your city manager done even a cursory survey, talked to the people that lived there, he would have discovered that about 85% of the people in that area do not want to be annexed. And again, that annexation has absolutely no chance of progressing. So why, why is it being pursued? Why is the city putting its political capital behind it? Why are they expending money? And why are they becoming even more and more unpopular with the people that you profess to serve?
Once again, once again, make sure your statements are accurate because the folks that live in that area, we don't serve currently. We're giving them that option to be served.
I didn't say you did. I'm just saying you're proposing to annex people that have a chance to...
Mr. Dice, I'm just asking you, make sure that your statements are correct.
They're absolutely correct.
Through the mayor, I have a question of Mr. Dice.
Yeah.
Could you tell us where you live?
Currently, I live in Live Oak, but I don't, you don't need to be a resident to work with people. You guys are proposing to annex my friends and they've asked me to help them fight this. It's very unpopular and if my friends ask me for help, I give it to them.
Through the mayor.
It's always been my creed.
Go ahead.
I'd like to ask how this actually directly pertains to the issue that, an agenda item that we are currently supposed to be considering, the manager employment agreement.
I just let you know, I said, you know, your city manager's incompetent. If he proposes annexation, as Bob pointed out, he's given you information that was incorrect. He said he's had support.
Mr. Dice, Mr. Dice, once again, make sure you're, that you have your facts straight.
I have them fact, we have documents that...
Mr. Dice, Mr. Dice, I'm not going to argue with you. I'm going to give you some more time, okay? But I want you to get your facts straight on this. This city council directed our city manager to undertake with staff at our direction the proposed annexation of that area.
Initially, back in February?
Mr. Dice, Mr. Dice, this has been something that has been on the radar for quite some time. This all pertains back to a tax exchange agreement with Sutter County many years ago. This is also precipitated by the request from residents who you purportedly represent in this action from your bedroom in Live Oak. This is an action that has, that this community has asked for.
Really?
I'm not going to answer with sarcasm. I just made a statement.
I just did. I can answer with any tone of voice I wish to choose. It seems like I'm wasting my time here.
You, you have and you've wasted, quite frankly, you've wasted our time because this doesn't pertain directly to our city manager contract by any stretch of imagination when this council directs staff to do something under the policy and direction of a council.
Okay, so this council takes responsibility?
Absolutely. I'll take 100% responsibility for it.
That's good to know.
Bring it back to council for action.
Through the mayor. I'll go ahead and move recommendation.
I'll second that.
We have a motion, once again, multiple seconds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just to hopefully offer a positive, I'd like to say it's a pleasure to serve this council and thank you for your vote of confidence. I appreciate it.
And, and sir, from this council, you lead a remarkable staff and have a very well-equipped staff in which to carry out the direction of this council. You've done that to a great degree of success. Even as we disagree as members of the council, we're able to bring forward the process and continue to serve this community, again, with your direction of staff. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Item number 13, again, business from the council. We are going to be canceling the November 15th city council meeting. This is at my recommendation, seeing as that we have two members of the city council that will be being replaced through the election. That would leave this council in a, virtually a lame duck decision-making...
Not really.
Environment.
Council member Duke and I were ready to vote until the last day.
We're ready to work, right too.
That's not at our request.
You'll be coming back, trust me. But, but we want to have any, any decisions that are being made on a go-forward basis to be done by those that, again, will be serving into, into the future, at least four years, potentially four years into the future, once they're elected. So that's the reason for the cancellation of that. And as also, as we push up into the holiday seasons, things begin to get busy. So we will have a very packed agenda on the first, so I would encourage all to bring an inflatable pillow of sorts for comfort because we may be here about three and a half hours possibly on the first, so we can accommodate all those items as we move forward.
Mayor, I think we do need a motion and a second on that.
I'll go to direction from council here.
I will make one comment here real quickly, that it is agreeable that if there are some small agenda items other than the mayor, vice mayor and, you know, swearing in of the new council members, that the first meeting in December, you know, it'd be okay to have some small stuff on there if necessary. So...
We'll try to avoid it the best we can.
Yes, we will, but there could be some things that could come up.
Okay.
Thank you. And with that, I will move the item.
Second motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And moving on to council reports. Council member Dipal.
As we were just on that LAFCO item, I did, I was at the LAFCO meeting. It was a couple of weeks ago and it was approved that the period of, the protest period was going to go from 21 to 45 days. The normal protest period is 21 to 60 days. So we felt as the LAFCO, LAFCO, we, together, we felt that 45 was a reasonable time versus 21. So that was that meeting. Aside from that, we did, there were some cancellations of other meetings. We did attend, all of us attended the League of California Cities in Long Beach last week. That was many, many sessions that I personally attended and got more information and hopefully be able to move forward with some new projects here in town. One of the projects that I did pick up on last year when I attended was the Summer at City Hall. This year, I was actually privileged to speak on the panel of engaging youth and presenting Summer at Youth at City Hall and how it was put together for Uba City. So I was there representing Uba City with that program. This coming year, I'm hoping to expand it, not only to have more students here in Uba City, but hopefully even make it a regional program that includes Uba County as well as Sutter High School and so forth and chartered schools as well, so that we can get more kids involved in the program to learn about public service and community involvement. So I was very, very privileged to be there. Second, I was also honored to speak with Congress Garan Mendy this last week for the, representing Uba City in Sutter County, the 2016 Women of the Year on women's issues and community engagement. So I was very, very honored and privileged to be asked to speak alongside him. This past Saturday, attended the National SEEK campaign, great dinner activities or music. And this campaign strives to bring education and awareness about the SEEK community and the culture. So it was a beautiful event and amazing, amazing singer. I believe he was on American Idol.
Indian Idol.
Indian Idol, right? Yeah, so amazing, amazing voice, but the program was very, very well-taken and I was glad that I was able to attend. Aside from that, I think that's it.
Thank you very much. And moving on to council member Dukes.
A couple items to report. Attended the Sutter Buttes Flood Control Meeting last Wednesday. We are moving forward with the Laurel Avenue project next year, but we are continuing, continuing to work on the gap projects locally here at the Fifth Street Bridge, the, at the Biggs Bridge, the erosion control project there, and I believe there's one other at the Union Pacific Rail Crossing on the levee. So we're moving ahead with those. Attended the Mosquito Vector Board Meeting and we're winding down this time of year as, as the activity of mosquitoes seems to taper off dramatically at this point. But this year, we had another high year and when you look at the numbers that we have here per capita, we have some of the highest numbers in the state here in this area. A lot of it has to do with the rice fields and the standing water from the rice and so it is something that... And so it is something that we need to be vigilant on and keep watch on each year. That's all I have to report.
Thank you. And councilmember Gill.
I was not able to make the Subuca meeting, but I believe you pitched it for me. I was out of town. A lot of stuff is happening with the Sutterbutz Flood Control Agency, a lot of meetings, and like councilmember Dukes had mentioned, is they are fixing the gap project, a project that was originally done by the Army Corps of Engineers, had to put a slurry wall right through town here when, back in nineteen ninety-seven. Fortunately, that slurry wall was not deep enough, so it's not a safe. So at their cost, we're going back and having that worked out. It's supposed to be done in about a ten-day period. We are also trying to go after additional state monies for some additional projects, which hopefully by the next meeting in November, I can tell you what they are and what dollar amounts we're trying to go after, because they're still in the preliminary change stages. Also attended the League of City Meetings. You attend a lot of different sessions and meetings, and you hope to walk away with something that you can go, wow, that was worthwhile attending. The mayor and I, during our, what is it, down on the floor? Yeah, the expo, went and saw this modular home, and once we toured it and got a nice take of it, they use that for transition homeless shelters. And I believe the mayor was able to bring back a little CD disc or a flash drive that has it all loaded on it. But they're able to put it on two-point-three acres, and I believe it houses about a hundred and twenty people or so forth. And the cost was pretty minimal compared to what I honestly thought. I mean, it's great to put the homeless folks, you know, in a nice spot, but it's a better alternative than the tough sheds, in my opinion. And again, it's transitional housing, two-point-three acres, they're able to make gardens out of, you know, out of the area, and they're able to take the food, sell it out on the farmer's market. And again, it's not permanent housing, but it's transitional. And I think with my time limited here, but I'm definitely something that the mayor can work with the other jurisdictions and see if we can put something like that in our community, which is kind of nice. Was also able to attend, with many of the city officials here, the, on Sunday night, the National Sikh Organization has put on a fundraiser to help raise awareness for Sikhs. You know, who are Sikhs? What's their values? What do they stand for? Too often, Sikhs are being, not being recognized in a proper way. They're being taken wrong as far as ISIS or Islamics, Muslims, whatever you want to call it. So I think it's just working now with Dr. Rajwant Singh, who's from Washington DC, who's working with David Axelrod and President Obama's marketing team, drawing about one-point-two million dollars' worth of advertisements on CNN, Fox News, NBC, and so forth. So you'll probably start seeing some of those come across the airways. And in one night here, we raised a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars in Yuba City. So that goes quite a long way. So thank you to all the citizens of the city of Yuba City. And it was great to see that our staff, our council members from here, our chief of police, our city manager, Mr. Gale, and our chief of police, district attorneys, Sheriff Parker. We had a great, great community representation, as well as members of the Sikh Eastern Community from the city of Yuba City. So that's all I have.
Thank you very much. And time's grown short.
It is.
You know? Moving on to our vice mayor, Stan Cleveland.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I had a very light two weeks and stuff on meetings, many canceled and things going on with other jurisdictions. But I did attend the League of City Conference, and as a member of the board of the Sacramento, North Sacramento Division, and on one of the committees, the environmental quality and I think it's land use. Luckily, we didn't have a meeting with that one. We had resolved everything, didn't have to have a meeting down there. I have reapplied or am reapplying for those two positions, and hopefully I can serve the community in trying to shape the policy and make sure that our rural communities are highly considered, and there are some good people on those committees protecting our position in government. Attended many sessions, and I will make note that I attended Preet's presentation, and I thought it was excellent. There were different variations of the same type of efforts going on in different communities. It all depended on the size of the community as to how broad it expanded, whether they had large amounts of money to put towards it or not also. Ours was, I think, fantastic, the effort and her presentation. Let's see. I also attended two main sessions that I really wanted, was interested in, was dealing with fire departments and EMTs and how the data is thrown about and bantered and from both sides and stuff sometimes, and learning how to properly analyze the different datas and databases that are brought out. So that is going to be very helpful for me in the next year or two, dealing with fire issues and employees. We had some interesting morning sessions, or general sessions. One of them, I just got to say this, the guy just went out and did it and didn't tell anybody. He went out to a section of a street, was his experiment. It was kind of a little rundown, and they brought in props and trees and benches and did some basically water-based paints on the streets and put bike trails. They did all kinds of stuff on one section of a downtown street, and then invited everybody in there to come in, just, you know, to be part of it. And he didn't get permission. He just put orange vests on and went and did it, a big team of them. And the people loved it, and now he, and the city eventually agreed to allow some of this stuff in the city and to do that. And then he's done projects all over the United States now. I think he's done some international stuff, too. And they go in there and they assess some things, and they just start doing that volunteer, and they test it, see what the community has to say about it. And if the community likes it and supports what's going on, because they can actually see real-time the benefit for businesses it is, instead of just having stark buildings and streets and sidewalks. And it was really kind of funny sometimes because he said, I didn't ask permission, I just did it. And he never truly got in trouble, but I can tell you, and he was kind of funny a little bit on how he presented it. I appreciate his candor and gave us some ideas as to maybe what we could do in our community to, you know, give some tests to some areas and let people know this is what it could look like. So I want to at least pursue that in concept in the future. Other than that, I just kept my, we had a lot of meeting with the other council members from other cities. Had two, two and a half hour sessions where people, we wanted to get together and discuss the same issues in each big city, small city, and find out how we're each dealing with it. And got some interesting takes on homelessness and transportation and affordable housing from some of the different council members. So it was really a productive time, I think, for me. So hopefully, we can move some forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Kind of stepping back from, I guess, back in time, the city manager and I went and attended the memorial service out of Beale Air Force Base for Lieutenant Colonel Edie, and that was a remarkable moment, just to be able to listen to friends, family, and a, an individual that, as, and actually, councilmember Dukes was out there along with his wife. But it was incredible to listen to this gentleman's career, but even more so, brought me to realize that we have a great community. And part of that is that this gentleman had traveled throughout the United States, first being in the Navy, started out in Florida, and settled, and as he transferred to the Air Force, settled in Lincoln, California, and enjoyed so much the area that his growing family and aging family began to settle down around, and he chose not to promote further in the military, so he could serve the US military as a flight instructor and also to begin spending more time with his family in the area. So I thought that that was a great testimony to just what a remarkable person he must have been. Never met him, but certainly you could tell the loss was deep in the organization. Went to League of California Cities, and there's a number of things that I can report back on. The Vision Zero Resolution was modified in committee in advance of the final vote. So what we had looked at here as a city council ended up being modified to, with language that this, the intent of it was not for the state or any other governmental agency to use that as a restriction for funding in the future. So that was a good concern, and certainly the modification was a good thing. We also looked at, as Cash said, we looked at this modular home setup. I think it's remarkable, and I'll talk a little bit more about that here in a second. But also, we located at the direction or request of, the police department looked at a camera system for being able to set up portably throughout our town. And as the paper reported, it looks like the Housing Authority will be becoming a partner. We certainly talked to the vendor about private partner, or private-public partnerships with this camera system. It's a lower-cost, high-quality system that can be used for anything from vandalism to gang activities. So we are extremely pleased with what we found during the expo portion of that, not to say how many actually sessions that we went through and learned tremendously, whether it be homeless issues or whatever. It was a remarkable time to be down there. Also attended the retirement for John Blevins, Yuba City firefighter, who started his career at the Walton Station when it was Walton Fire Department, moved some fourteen years ago over to the city, fifteen years ago, over to the city, and retired almost to the moment that he turned fifty years old. So it was maybe the closest I had ever seen this shaved for retirement, even though his official time was eight o'clock the following morning. The retirement took place at one o'clock, and he was born at one oh six. So if you ever run into John Blevins in public, congratulate him for the time that he spent in service to our community. Also attended the Subuca Meeting in Cassius Sted, and the, actually, it was a fairly short meeting, but progress moves forward, and as a couple of projects will be moving in, during the fall and winter, that will get us closer to a completion date of the largest levee project currently in the United States. Also attended Secog's GRAPPA Meeting. This is Government Relations and Public Affairs Committee, and nothing substantial to report out of that. Did attend the Rideout Memorial Hospital Expansion Dinner, and many of the members of the city were there. I know Cash was there, our city manager was there, and Mr. Gale was there. Remarkable facility that we now have that will be opening in its entirety to our community. The equipment, the type of equipment, and the ability of that equipment will advance care in our community far beyond what is currently available within the region. And I would dare say that it exceeds the capability of some of the hospitals down in Sacramento, even though I didn't see a direct Peds Department in the hospital. They are making some advances towards treatment along those lines, but all other care, it is a tremendous facility. Also attended the Casa de Esperanza fundraiser. Actually, I was the guest of Mike and Colleen for that. It was a night of humor, along with the ability to raise funds and continue to promote the good work of Casa de Esperanza. Couple things moving forward. Mayor's Cup will be held on the twenty-eighth of this month. It'll be Yuba City and River Valley High School. So if you all want to see a good football game, both of them are pretty well-matched up, I think, this year. So that should be a good time. This Friday, we are going to have an event down on Reeves Avenue by Plymouth Street, again, where we will be doing the ribbon-cutting for Phase One of the Bridge Street Project, and then unveiling what Phase Two, Three, and Four will look like, and announcing the kind of review of our downtown specific plan, and getting some cooperative input on that process moving forward. So we're looking at blowing a little dust off of the covers of our books here at City Hall. It's been a while since it's been reviewed. And then also make a note that on November second, here at City Hall, we're going to have a reception for a rather remarkable individual in our community, who, when we talk about Sikh awareness, has led this community to a deeper understanding since nineteen eighty. Started a small parade with goodness, I think it was about three hundred people, if I remember it right. I didn't count them all. And currently, the whole concept that he had, the vision that Mr. Dedar Baines had back in the late seventies, and that first event in nineteen eighty, was to bring the community together as one for a celebration, and it has been remarkable over the years. Grew from three hundred to, we have no idea now. Nobody gets to take their shoes off and count, but it probably has reached up to a hundred thousand people for just an amazing three-day festival and event culminating in the parade on Sunday. So we're going to have a reception for him here, and thank him as a community for everything that he has done. So with that...
Through the mayor, I have one additional item I'd like to add. On Friday, October twenty-eighth, our Sister City delegation comes from Torrida City.
Thank you.
Would like to invite the public to be here to welcome them. As you came in tonight, you saw the new garden that was put together with, by, I believe, Yuba City Rotary, and they've done a nice job. It's not quite finished yet, but it's getting very close, and thank you, Mr. Gale, for your help in that also.
He operated a shovel, not the skid steer. Because the rocks and trees are still there.
Exactly. But just wanted to let our public know that that is an event coming up that we have participated in, I believe, now twenty-six years. So it's a great relationship with our Sister City and want to continue that.
Yeah, and thank you for, I knew I was going to be dropping the ball on one item out of all of these, but again, great relationship and certainly welcome everyone to come out to that. It's remarkable. The kids arrive here speaking absolutely no English, and they leave speaking no English. But we learn a few words in Japanese out of absolute need. But no, it's a lot of fun. They're going to be very busy in our community for that week, and if they come up trick-or-treating at your door, don't give them the treat. Let them pull a trick on you. Let's see how that works out for them. So with that, we'll adjourn tonight's meeting.